Good evening and welcome to our foreign meeting today. You may all stand under the ledges. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the God who stands on this nation, my God, in this Lord, for the living and dead. Thank you. Okay, at this time we have opportunity for members of community to address the Board of Education for the agenda topics.
This is agenda item solving, right? Agenda item solving?
Yes.
I wanted to question the contracts by the 10,000 approved. You have the three evaluation, the psychological evaluation, and you have not to exceed the total amount though. Is that for the entire school year? Or is that, I mean, we're in front of the march now. And when does that exactly?
Yes.
That's actually for from now going forward to the end of the year based on evaluations that are required through CSC.
Now, these were only acquired, but how come there's such a big difference in prices?
As I said, it's based on the different providers that provide evaluations, the type of evaluations and the number of evaluations that need to be done depending on the number of students that require them.
Okay, okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
I'm Captain Akuba. Item C, budget transfers. I know I addressed a while back about this issue about the use of codes transferring money. What are the codes on these particular items? It says from code and then to codes.
The 5-5-4-0, these are all in the 5-5-8 ones. They are for in-house transportation. And at this time, we needed to use outside contractors, bus companies, to fulfill our needs. So we had to transfer our inside bus fund to the 5-5-1-0, which is for outside contract for busing, transportation.
Okay, yeah, I was able to find some of the codes by using an old copy of the budget. So is it transportation to transportation?
Yes, classroom.
Some of the code I wasn't able to find. Like the first one for $17,434,100. Again, my original question to the other transfers is why are we using codes? Why can't we just put the general ledger that they're coming from and going to?
It's like I said before, this is standard practice that the districts follow by New York State. And if you're working with the codes, you know what they mean.
Right, but it's taxpayer money, so why should it be in code? It should be able to, we should be able to state $17,400 is being moved from one account, from whatever the account is to this account.
Yes.
If I can look it up on here and see that code 5-5-4-0, 4-3-0-9, 1,000 is for rentals, buses, then that should be on the agenda.
That's what's on the agenda, it's in code. That's what we do, it's standard practice. If you'd like to know, you can ask just as you did today.
I don't agree with that because like I said, this is taxpayer money and we shouldn't have to, we shouldn't have to look at code. We should know where our money is being moved to and from. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next up, we have recognition of a community member.
Out in the floor, Ms. Carney.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite our varsity cheerleading coach up, Ms. Stephanie Corain. I'd like to invite the board office to come over here and maybe shake hands. Ms. Corain, I want to be head of the varsity cheerleading squad, wanted to acknowledge a community member who really went above and beyond in his generosity in supporting the cheerleading club. So I think she'd like to just say a few words and then we would like to recognize Mr. Kenneth LaBonner.
Well, we all know him as Grandpa Ken. Grandpa Ken came this year and it was so incredible because on our road to Nationals to get our athletes there, our Booster Club does a great job of raising over $1,000 an athlete. And this year, we came a little bit short and Grandpa Ken came in at the end. And he was Superman. And he made it possible for every single one of our athletes to go to Nationals 100% paid, which was phenomenal. And it's something that we've actually never been able to do, especially because this year, we started Booster Club at zero and everybody worked tirelessly all year. And our kids never went without. And I have to tell you, you were like an angel. And I know we've told you before, but this would have been impossible without you. So I'm not sure if you know what a great impact you have put on this program. But we love you so much and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Mrs. Carney and members of the board, I'm proud and honored to have been part of the Boosters for these young ladies. They worked very, very hard to get to where they did. And I'm glad they went to Disney because I had a chance to go to Disney too. But one of the things that was outstanding was the support of the business community. They were unbelievable. Financially, when I have a letter from the Boosters and when I approached all these people and I told them, you know, it was for the girls, for the girls, absolutely. How much do you want? I said, whatever you feel is comfortable. The checks were coming in for $100, $200, and some a little bit more. I couldn't believe it. Also, for the dinner, the night of the awards, the people that donated product for the Chinese auction. Again, I couldn't believe it. The business community really supports our girls. Thank you.
You could all stay. And we did just have another plaque that we just wanted to award to a staff member. Every now and then, there are things that occur in a district where somebody has to do something heroic, go above and beyond in their everyday work and really put themselves in a place to come to the aid of a student. And just like to say, we would like to show appreciation to Willie Austin if you'd come up here, who during the course of his great job, really really put his health towards the community of students that needed it. And we truly appreciate Mr. Austin. We've known each other for a long time. And in whatever position you hold, you constantly go above and beyond for our students. And thank you. Thank you once again.
All right. Next, next up is consent agenda motion. Thank you, Ms. Lance, second. Mr. Grass, all in favor? Motion carried. All business in business. The third and final reading of the revised updated board policies. Motion? Thank you, Mr. Grass, second. Mr. Dor, any discussion during the final? Mr. Grass?
No.
Oh, okay. I didn't have a question down there. All in favor? Motion carried. Item D, special call for a special district meeting on May 17. That was the timeline.
That was the library last time for the special library vote. This is for the.
Thank you, Ms. Grass, second. Thank you, Ms. Ligon, any discussion? Just gives the details. All in favor? Motion carried. Approval memorandum of agreement? Motion? Thank you, Ms. Lance, second. Thank you, Mr. Grass. Any comments? All in favor? Motion carried. Item D, approval of change order for the high school? Motion? Thank you, Ms. Ligon, second. Mr. Grass, any discussion, questions? All in favor? Motion carried. Item E, approval of acceptance of donations. A few. Majority of the items are from Target. Always very grateful. Who's on Target? Anyone leave anybody out? Oh, I'm right, sorry. Riley Avenue and the amount of $2,000 for the deposit of the fourth grade track. Always appreciate. Motion? Thank you, Mr. Dor, second. Mr. Grass? All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. And opportunity for superintendent, Ms. Carney.
Thank you. This evening, we're going to be doing a third in our present presentations. I will be talking about special education, PPS, guidance, and some other instructional items. And this is, as I, as I just mentioned, the things that we're going to be talking about this evening as we go forward. I did mention athletics. We'll also be talking about extracurricular activities and athletics. Okay, as I do during each of these presentations, just review what we're, what the board's financial and operational goals are as we go through this budget process. As each presentation, we mentioned that we're looking to develop a budget that does maintain our district programs. We want to be sure we have adequate resources for our students and also that we create a budget that the community can support. Very important in these changing and challenging times is to make sure that we look at any new legislation that's coming down from the state and any regulations and what kind of impact they're going to have on the tax cap and our budget development. This has been something that we've been very involved in this school year. And we also want to identify and implement efficiencies in all areas. And one of the things that the board has asked us to do is really look at assessing alternative energies. We have been working and looking at a different, a number of different solar options to put as we go forward in particularly the transportation garage. Also, making sure that we are proactive in replenishing our buses. As you're aware, we're looking to have more and more of our buses and in time to replenish, we found the pro pay buses to be very efficient and very cost effective. And we are replenishing our buses based on the bond that was passed each year. And the tax cap and what does the law say? As I say in each presentation, that the revenues raised by the district through the property tax can increase by no more than approximately 2% or the CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, whichever is less, plus exemptions. And those things that can be exempt are our capital costs and some pension costs if they're over 2%. As that is not the case this year, that does not come into play. We do have a small amount of capital costs that do offset our tax levy by a very slight amount. And the CPI this year is quite significantly less than the 2%. And the Consumer Price Index is based on monthly data on changes in prices paid by urban consumers for different goods and services. And the CPI this year, as you can see, is significantly less than 1%. It's at .12%. So meaning that the tax levy cap without any exemptions is really very close to zero. And for us in Riverhead, once the exemptions are calculated, our tax levy cap is going to be just about .5%. Meaning that the overall levy to the taxpayers can increase by no more than a little under $500,000 from this year to the 2016, 17 school year. And one of the goals of the board and how we are going forward with our budget is that we do stay within the tax levy cap. The areas that we're speaking about tonight, as I said, one of them is special ed and PPS. And our special education needs are determined by our CSC, which is our Committee on Special Education. And they develop individual education plans for any student who needs services. The individual education plan really puts forth our different services. These come in a very wide range. It could be from physical therapy, additional time on testing, residential placements, the various needs that students may have to be sure that they're successful. PPS includes our registration, our nursing, our counseling, and evaluation and services. Our guidance department here, and as you can see, we have a guidance department that is very involved in working with our students, particularly at the high school level. But also, they do begin at the middle school level. Very proud that we did have during the 2014, 15 school year, students who took over 540 AP exams. We had 38 students named AP scholars. Nine named AP scholars with honors. 11 named AP scholar with distinction. And two named a national AP scholar, the highest distinction. Our students were among 84% of the graduating class. Of our students that graduated were college bound. They did receive over $7 million in scholarships locally. And we're very appreciative of all of our local organizations that support our students with over $600,000 in scholarships. And we are also proud that 35% of our students graduated with Advanced Regions diplomas during this 2014, 15 school year. Computers and technology. This is something that the district has been really aggressive in working with and being sure we can get different funding to make sure our students have the most up-to-date access to technology that can enhance learning. And you can see all the statistics here just about our networks and the amount of computers that we have. This also includes our surveillance cameras, our phone systems throughout the district. And our information, technology department also does serve. We have over 330 smart boards. We have projectors, interactive displays in classrooms, auditoriums, virtual desktops. And as you can see, one of our initiatives is really to provide tablets and Chromebooks for our students, which we have over 1,300 currently in the district. And we'll be purchasing more through the Smart Schools Technology Bond. I'd like to thank Robert Hines, who is here at the podium. He's our director of technology. And he has really done a phenomenal job in making sure our students have the utmost up-to-date access. Extracurricular activities. And as you're aware, the Board of Education really supports providing our kids with as many experiences we can to expose them to different areas. And we do have many after-school activities in music, performing arts, literature, science, business math, language, and also community service. We have club activities that range from different competitions, including the Metaphy, peer-to-peer tutoring, charity fundraising, robotics club. And as I said once before, the board has been very dedicated to being sure that we provide our kids with experiences that can really excite them and determine areas of interest for them. Do just want to mention that the Blue Mass Spring Musical, Shrek, is going to open up on April 8. And also, we will have a lot of concerts and competitions that will be occurring throughout the spring. Then our athletic program. We offer 27 sports programs. We have 64 teams. We have 18 of our varsity programs achieved a New York State Public High School Athletic Association Scholar-Athlete Award within this last year. Our football and field hockey reached the semifinals in the playoffs. Our girls' basketball team was a Scholar-Athlete Team for the 11th consecutive year. We also have over 11 years at the Spring Track Program. Send students to, student athletes to New York State Championship meet. Our cheerleaders achieved the New York State Sports Status and attended the UCA National Competition in Florida, which is what was being spoken about this evening. So we do, we thank all of the people. And not only do we have many, many coaches and students that participate and teachers, we also have many community members who volunteer time throughout the community in support of our athletic programs. So here, when you look at the budget for all of our other instructional areas, you can see our special ed and home instruction is up just a little under 1%. Our nursing, our counseling, and our guidance, you can see the nursing and counseling are down and that is due to retirements. Guidance and attendance is up slightly. Career and tech ed has basically stayed the same. Summer school and other instruction is up about 4%. Library is down once again due to retirement. Computer technology is up due to all the new, the new classrooms and infrastructure we have that is needed throughout the district. And then extracurricular and activity and athletics are up due once again to the addition of different clubs, activities, and initiatives that we're doing throughout the district. So the overall budget is up about 2.38% in the other instructional areas at this point. And then just want to mention the future presentations. We have our revenues and projected tax levy and the BOE adoption at the next meeting on April 19. We have a public hearing on May 10 on the proposed budget. And then the budget vote is on May 17 at your local polling stations. And that's our third presentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. And just everybody, we noted the date change to April 19. Give you a minute. District news.
Thank you. As Ms. Kakounis just mentioned, just a reminder that the board meeting is changed from April 13 to April 19. And that's due to the Bozzi's budget vote. And they switched the date and we need to be in session on that day. Then just want to mention a few things happening around the district. It's been a very busy time. Over these, you know, spring is in the air. We had a little bit of snow the other day, but I think we can be assured that that's it. So we're excited to be moving forward with all our spring activities and upcoming events. I just want to mention that during the month of March, we have our parents as reading partners in all of our elementary schools. We had spoke a little about Roanoke in their events last time. And this time, just want to mention that Riley did have their two-week parents as reading partners program March 7 through 18. And it included, their theme this year was based on sciences. And it included a night of robotics, a science fair, different Long Island authors, bridge building, a mad scientist, and much more. And the theme was Reading Lights, The Way to Learning. And parents were asked to read with their child for 15 minutes each evening to fill out a lightbulb worksheet. And on each lightbulb, the students wrote the title of the book and the main idea of the book that they chose to read. And the light bulbs were posted in the hallway to Light the Way to Learning. And it was just a really nice event in the school. Created a wonderful atmosphere focusing on both science and reading. And also want to just remember, mention that fourth grade teacher Terry Messina coordinated the annual science fair to go along with the PARP this year. And student experiments are on display during the family reading night. And the week concluded with a school spirit day and a mad scientist assembly. So it was really a nice celebration in the school to celebrate both reading and science. And then just want to say congratulations to all our Latinists. 14 Long Island schools participated in the 11th Annual Suffolk Campy Certimen. It's an annual competition in which the Campys' best Latin students go head-to-head. And this is a knowledge-based, quick recall competition. And it has questions on Latin grammar, translation, Greco-Roman mythology, English word origins, and all manner of ancient historical and cultural trivia. And our team, the Blue Waves, Advanced A Team, took top honors in the Level 4 competition. And these seniors were the highest-rated Latinists in the whole region. So we want to congratulate them. And then we also want to congratulate, congratulate our other teams. The Advanced B Squad of juniors finished third place. Our high school ninth graders ranked third place. Our 10th graders earned first place in Regions Level 3 competition. And at the middle school, the students placed second. So overall, just something really to be proud of for our Latinus and our Latin program. So kudos to all. And then also just want to mention that our Global 9 students have been very excited in merging ancient artifacts with the new 3D printing technology. You may remember that we had a presentation with the 3D printer here. And it's really very exciting, all the different things that the students can create. And Ms. Banfield and librarian, Ms. McCurk, they collaborated together, which is something that we're really, really look to do is have collaborations between different teachers. And students created, used a research project on ancient civilizations that they're studying. They used books, online databases, and internet resources to create One Over Kind flyer and highlight their civilization. And then they worked with the 3D printer to create different artifacts to go along with the civilization in the library. And it was just a wonderfully collaborative lesson and that the students really got a lot out of it and enjoyed. And then just want to make mention, we've mentioned at the last few board meetings about our ongoing event for First Book. And this is a nonprofit company that supplies new books to school districts and communities. The program is called Books on Wheels. And if we get 2,000 members to sign up from Riverhead, this is teachers, faculty, staff members, we will receive a truck of 40,000 new books for our school. If we qualify, the truck will come on April 27, 22. And books will be distributed on 23rd. There's a link with information on the homepage of the district website. So encourage everybody to participate. And just want to end with, as I mentioned before, we have our upcoming musical of Shrek. And that's going to be on April 8, and April 9, and April 10. And it should be a wonderful performance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. Opportunity for board members? Opportunity for our CFA?
No, we're good, thanks.
Thank you. Opportunity for members of the community? Anyone? Okay? Motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Grass, second. Mr. Dor, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carry and the next meeting is April nineteenth. Have a good night.